Well, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the zoning board of appeals. It's a special meeting on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. Let's do roll call first. I'm Steve Antonio, I'm present. Joanne Hogan, you're you're here. Mark Freeman.
I am here.
Josh Mickelson.
Present.
And Ally Rice.
Present.
Ally, are you a full member or alternate?
I am an alternate.
But I think we need to, we can bring her on, correct, Mike?
How many members you have? You got how many present?
Oh, no, Rom just tuned in.
Rom's also an alternate.
Rom's here.
Rom, did you say you're here?
So your board is, your board is six regular members and three and three alternates. So if you have less than six of the regular members present, you can point alternates to fill any of those vacancies vacancies.
I'd love to bring Ally in, so I'd like.
You have one, one vacancy from Katie Martin's resignation.
All right, well, I'd like to appoint Ally Rice to be on the board for this meeting. And as you said, the only member that's absent is Katie Martin. So um, that that's all of us. So we'll we'll circle back to that at the end. But we have one application in front of us. It's application number 21 dash 04 of MAC5 LLC applicant and Valley Recreation LLC. The owner for the variance has Simsbury zoning regulation section 4.3 to allow parking within 20, the 25 foot front yard setback on the property located at 1603 Hot Meadow Street as per the plans and better known to us as the Simsbury bowling lanes. I'd like to invite anyone that would like to present on behalf of the applicant to to do so.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Darling and I'm the vice president with MAC5 Development LLC. And I'm here with Jim Cassidy, who is my civil engineer. And I think Jim is just going to give you a brief overview of the project. And if you have any questions, we'll we'll be here to to answer them.
So good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm a professional engineer and principal with the firm of Hellsey Pearson and Cassidy in Cromwell, Connecticut, here tonight representing MAC5 Development, as Matt had mentioned, for the redevelopment of a piece of property located at 1603 Hot Meadow Street, the former bowling alley on Hot Meadow Street. We're here tonight seeking a variance, as was mentioned, of section 4.3 to allow for a portion of our parking lot to be over the front building setback line. Is it okay to share my screen to start this presentation? Uh, let's see. Can everybody see that screen?
I can.
Okay, so I'd first like to start off by just noting that we have posted a sign on property. We have been maintaining it. And then I have emailed the signed affidavit to Mike Litten. So you should have that for your records. The property we were talking about this evening again is located at 1603 Hot Meadow Street. This is the former bowling alley. This is a site photo outlined in yellow is the property that we're talking about. It consists of 2.59 acres. You can see the dark black rectangle here. This is the footprint for the existing bowling alley that has a footprint of about 20,400 square feet, associated parking out front and then the miniature golf range off to the left or to the south side of the property. It is bounded on the north and on the west by open space as part of the Redwood Homewards Association, bounded on the south and west on this side by two existing residents along Mary Jo, or sorry, Lord Joe Lane. And then this piece on the south is also open space owned by the town of Simsbury. A note on the existing condition survey that we submitted, a couple important things to note on the plan. Number one, presently, the site does contain two very large curb cuts out to Hot Meadow Street to access the parking lot. In addition to, if you take a look at the footprint of the building, you have a 25 foot rear yard setback. Presently, there is a little bump out on the back of the building that is not conforming to the setback for the rear yard, being at 20 feet from the back line. On the side yard, you have a 20 foot side yard setback. The building also presently encroaches over the side yard setback is 11.79. And also, there's a little add on addition on the front corner of the building that's actually about 5.3 feet from the property line. We are proposing to redevelop the site. The existing building is going to be removed. We are going to be building a new building in a similar location to where it is now. It'll be a one story retail building with a footprint of slightly over 19,000 square foot, represented by the brown rectangle on this plan. Again, it's going to be in a similar location to the existing building, although we are going to rotate it so it does comply with the side yard setbacks and also the rear yard setbacks. So those existing nonconformities will go away. There is going to be a parking lot to the front of it. Again, it's going to be in a similar location. But to be able to accommodate the required number of parking spaces in a sidewalk and display area in front of the building, we needed to rotate it slightly. So what that is doing is it's requiring the east section, this clouded area of spaces to be over the 25 foot front yard setback. We'll be within 5.9, 5.9 feet of the front property line. But it is important to note that because of this reconfiguration, we're going to be going down to one curb cut. So effectively, by going to the one curb cut, the southerly curb cut will be eliminated and a large portion of the northerly one will also be eliminated. And that actually presents a reduction of impervious coverage over that front building line of about 819 square feet or a reduction of about 30, 30.5%. So it actually, by doing this, this reconfiguration, it also, it actually allows us an opportunity to improve the landscape area in front of it and reduce impervious coverage and driveway area in front of the front building line. We feel that the specific hardship to this property, number one, is its irregular shape. It's kind of an L-shaped property. It's not not square, it makes it a little difficult to work with. In addition to, we could have tried to work with the existing nonconformities, but we decided to rotate the building to make it conform to the residents to the west and to the south. And in doing that, it pushed this front corner closer to the street, therefore pushing the parking closer to the street, therefore requiring the variance for the front parking. Again, the specific hardship is the existing irregular shape of the property and then also the reduction of the existing nonconformities. So with that, I'm going to be very brief tonight. Unfortunately, I have to be in another public hearing shortly. So I'm going to give you a brief presentation. At this point, I'll gladly answer any questions the commission members may have.
I'll I'll start. So I just want to reiterate what you said and make sure I heard correctly. The number of parking spots that are exhibited on this drawing are mandatory by our town requirement? Or you folks would like?
Well, no, quite honestly, if you take a look at the number of parking spaces on this plan, we're showing 66 parking spaces. For the retail use, we actually are required to provide a total of slightly over 100 parking spaces. You're right, we, as part of our actual site plan application, we are allowed to file for a special permit for a reduction of number of spaces as long as we have an area that we can provide spaces in the future if there's another need that or another use that comes in and needs it. This yellow rectangle is part of the use coming in. They have a outdoor display area for some larger products. So if, for instance, the use we're proposing, the retail use we're proposing goes out and we'll say another use comes in, this concrete pad can convert it to the the shortage of parking spaces. So what you see on the plan is the minimum that we can actually work with with the future expansion of this area if we had to put parking in here. So we're right at the minimum right now. We can't go any less on the parking spaces.
Okay, and can you clarify a little more? What is in that fenced outdoor display area that you need besides just having it as a reserve? If that's what you said, I see the propane tank.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm sure it's been in the newspaper and I mean, Matt, I hope it's okay to say, but the prospective tenant coming in is Tractor Supply Company. So if anyone's familiar with Tractor Supply Company, they they sell products for local, small, gentleman type farmer. Such products as implements for tractors, corrals for horses, fencing, so on and so forth. The yellow area is what we call outside display area. Some of those products are too big, too heavy to go into the store for a customer to come pick it up, such as a brush hog can weigh over 1,000 pounds. A piece of corralling for a horse fence is four feet wide, 20 feet long. So those larger products go in that fenced and outside display area.
Then what is the display area to, as we're looking at it, to the right of the building or to the north of the building?
That's a garden center. It's part of the building.
That that'll be an enclosed greenhouse type structure with translucent. It'll be a greenhouse essentially. It's it's a new, new addition that Tractor Supply is adding to most of their stores. So yep, they sell plants and vegetable plants, you know, flower plants, things like that.
I wasn't aware, I haven't seen that yet. And just so we fully comprehend it, what are the green boxes to the front of the building?
So Tractor has a few different outside display areas. The yellow area is the, what we call the outside, where we have sort of the larger products we talked about. You also see some black lines running through the center, that's a drive aisle. So when a customer makes a purchase, they can actually drive their vehicle and they're being loaded up in the fenced area. They continue on their way because the product is too big, too heavy to put on, carry out and put onto the vehicle. The green area you see out front is a, what we call a seasonal sidewalk display area. Such items as log splitters, snow blowers, lawn motors, almost like you would have at an agway, would be stored on that that front section of the sidewalk. The purple area or pink area you see on the plan is what we call a permanent trailer display area. Tractor Supply also sells the black landscape trailers, not box trailers, and small, like residential landscape trailers. They're going to usually store in the parking lot and in this instance, they're going to be stored inside that fenced area. So they're protected.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any additional questions perhaps?
I have a question about what is the landscaping going to be between the parking and the road?
Yeah, so that's something that's going to come up at planning and zoning. But we definitely have landscape requirements. But it's important to note, when we haven't gotten to that level of detail, we need to get past the variance first. And we'll be developing those plans as part of our site plan package for planning and zoning. But again, it's important to note that by doing this, in this new configuration, we do pick up about another 1,819 square feet of area that could potentially have landscaping in it.
Yeah, we we fully intend on complying with the regulations on landscaping. We're not going to be asking for any waivers or grants on that. So we'll comply with the zoning regs on that.
All right, good.
You said that you changed the, I guess it kind of looks like a, yes, thank you. You switched it for the residents behind. Can you just explain more of that?
Sure, so again, if I take a look at the existing building, this is the existing condition survey. The existing building is nonconforming to the rear yard setback. You have a 25 foot rear yard setback. It's at 20 feet. On the south side of the building, you have a 20 foot side yard. It's at 11.79 at the back corners, actually have 5.7 at the front corner. When I did the new layout for the new building, as a part of it, with part of our proposal, we decided to bring the building into conformance with the side and rear yard setback. So you're going to have a minimum of 25 feet at this corner and 20 feet on this side of the building. But that, I had to slightly rotate the building, pushing this front right corner closer to the road.
Okay, I've got a couple more questions. The first one is, what's the width of the curb cut you're proposing?
It's going to be, the driveway is 28 feet.
Okay.
It's a 35 foot radius on the exiting lane and 25 on the entrance. So your overall curb cut will be about, it's probably about 75 feet overall. We need to be able to accommodate a turning maneuver for what we call a WB65. It's a tractor trailer with a 65 foot wheel base, wheel, yeah, wheelbase. So that tractor trailer can maneuver by coming in, headed in a southerly direction, make a turn, pull in front of the store, back into the loading area, and then be able to pull and then continue out to the north. Or out to the south, that's our most difficult maneuver. The actual curb cut is overall going to be less than one curb cut that's out there today. Remember, you've got two very large curb cuts that are out there today. I go back to the site photo. It shows a little better. These curb cuts are, I'll say mammoth. Those driveways are probably almost 40 feet wide alone, the driveway.
Yeah.
Plus three turns.
Now, the radii on the drawing, I'm glad that accommodates a tractor trailer. That was my concern. My other question is, if you look to the north of the building or to the right as we're looking to the plans, there's a rectangle that obviously goes over the setback lines. What exactly is that?
This here?
Yeah, but the rectangle, if you zoom in a little, goes over the setback line.
That's a portable loading dock. It's it's not a structure. It's it's a, it's a metal dock on wheels that can be shifted around as the truck backs up to it via a forklift. So it can be moved around by the forklift and the forklift will drive up on it and be able to get into the rear of the truck and pull the merchandise out of the truck and into the store.
So it's also important to note that if you see this dash line where my hand is, this is the existing edge pavement. So we're actually pulling back the edge of the pavement in the back here too. This will be a new concrete pad that'll be constructed in the back. And then along this north side of the property, the dash line is the existing pavement. We're not going any farther than the pavement is out there today. We tried to work within the existing confines of the pavement that are out there today.
All right, well, to be honest with you, there is an existing nonconformity in the form of trailers, maybe the other commissioners don't know, that the bowling lanes have had in that exact position. So it's more of a continuance, but I'm glad to hear it's mobile. Not to say it, but couldn't it be drawn, and it's a nitpiggy, but I'm just asking it, since it's mobile, couldn't it just be shifted a few feet to the west or up as you're looking at it? And that way it wouldn't be in the setback area?
Yeah, yeah, just move it back a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, just saying in the future, that's one less nonconformity for us to address.
Not a problem.
I'm just curious, because it looks like the, the like lanes in the parking lot are wide enough for two-way traffic.
Yeah, two-way traffic, correct.
It looks like the way it's laid out, it looks like it could be possible to do it as one-way traffic and narrow those. Have you considered that or?
So what's going to happen, when you go to one-way traffic, you need to angle the parking spaces. And again, I'm at the minimum number of parking spaces I can be at right now. When I angle them, you got to figure you're going to lose at least two spaces for each row of parking, so I'll be way under what I can, what I'm required to have.
Yeah, and not to belabor the subject, but one other thing is, you know, a lot of Tractor Supply customers drive larger trucks and allow them pull trailers. That's why we have those elongated spaces, those three spaces in the middle of the parking lot. You know, and generally speaking, though, whether they use those spaces for parking or not, they're going to enter and exit to pick up merchandise and they need to be able to maneuver, you know, without hitting other vehicles or pedestrians or things like that, getting stuck. So, but yeah, it's a good thought. It would definitely help in certainly some of my other projects too. But it's just, it is a, I think 20, 26 or so feet is the minimum requirement for this particular tenant anyways.
Okay.
As far as other tractor supplies, the square footage of the yellow slash purple area, is that your standard, your minimum, your maximum? Or where where does it fall as far as comp or, you know, other tractor supplies that you have?
It's actually smaller in that that whole area between the purple and the yellow is usually our outside display area. Usually that purple area is somewhere else in the parking lot that we couldn't accommodate. So we had to put it into what we normally use for the, for the FOD or the fenced and outside display area. It's also important to note that, you know, we've worked with the building. Unfortunately, it's not the prototypical building that we would go with at Tractor Supply, but we really had to work with them on the design of the building to make this thing work as best we possibly can on the site.
Yeah, their their new minimum requirement as of last year is a minimum of a 20,000 square foot fenced yard. But that's on a scenario where the fenced yard is attached to the building. And they've increased the size to 20,000 or more because they usually, they would prefer to put the greenhouse inside of the fenced yard. But the greenhouse has to be attached to the building. So here I have a situation due to the irregular shape of the lot where I got to divorce the fenced yard area from the building, but I can't do that with the greenhouse. So we were able to squeak by with a little less than 20,000 this time. But if you add up the greenhouse floor space, which I believe is about 4,000 or 5,000 square feet to this 18,000 square foot fenced area, you know, you get about where they would want to be had the property afforded us the ability to connect or, you know, put the yellow area next to the building like they would prefer it to be on a rectangular or a square kind of lot. So a lot of different variables here and trying to, trying to make it work for everybody.
We appreciate that, we want to work with you, that's for sure. We're not here to oppose, we're here to just understand the full scope. And in doing so, that is a pad, a concrete pad, that yellow slash purple area?
Yes, yeah, surrounded with a, it is surrounded with a fence with several gates to be able to access it. Customers will likely know what they need before, they will remain locked, you know, basically 24/7. But customers would would know what they need, purchase it from inside the store and then walk out with an associate who will unlock the gate and the customer will be able to drive in and, you know, collect their merchandise or have their propane tanks filled up or something like that.
All right, part of my question is, are you going to pour a pad within the setback area? Because it looks like on the south and the west side, it goes over the setback line, not to say it. And if you're going to put a fence up, then it's something we should at least acknowledge as part of this request. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, yeah, and I'll let Jim address it a little more, but I believe there's already a, the mini golf already goes into that area. So it's kind of an existing nonconformity. And I think there may also be a fence there, I'm not sure.
There is a fence down the property line on both, actually, there's a fence around the entire circumference other than the front street of this property. We're not moving the fence. If you look at the the backside of that area, there's a lot of existing trees along the property line that can actually be maintained. But working within the cleared area, the part that's already occupied by the miniature golf course for that concrete pad. We did push it back a little bit, you'll see a white area between the parking and the yellow area. That's basically a smaller area for some additional landscaping. So, you know, we've, we've created support national landscaping to the front, but we're working within what's already developed out there.
Statically, it'll be nicer to have something in the curb. What about height? What are you going to do with those 20 foot gates that traditionally lean against the building? If they're not going to be against the building?
Put them horizontal. The fence, the fencing is only 8 feet high, so we can't put them vertical. They'd have to be set horizontal.
Okay, that's sort of where I was going if there was going to be a height issue.
Is the new building going to be, and I may, I may have missed this and I apologize, but is the new building going to be taller than the than the bowling alley that's there now?
The new building will be 20 feet 8 inches high. I'm not exactly sure of the height of the existing building. Best I could tell, it's very similar in height. Because when you walk into the existing bowling alley, you have to walk up almost five feet in elevation to the front of it. And the the top is probably another good 12 to 18, or sorry, about another 15 to 18 feet above that. So I didn't measure the actual height, but it's it's well over 20 feet.
And I would also assume that all of the gray is obviously the the main parking lot area and everything, that all new asphalt will be laid?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a nice condition, but it's not going to work out grade wise. We need to regrade it. So we're going to have to basically reclaim all the existing pavement and regrade and pave the whole area.
And it'll, it'll be a brand new site when we're all done. Everything will be brand new. Just out of, out of curiosity, on the, by the loading area, on the right side of the new building there, what it, they look like to me, like, you know, are those like dumpsters or what or?
No, so that's, as Matt had mentioned, this is the new thing they have for their stores. It's going to be a greenhouse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There is a greenhouse structure, those are the racking systems for plants.
Gotcha.
Josh, you've been very quiet.
Yeah, I, I don't have a ton to add. I just, actually, if I could get clarification from, I think Laura, the parking, the number, the minimum number of spots, is that a state requirement? That's something we can't approve a variance for?
There are set parking calculations based on the uses. Off the top of my head, I must admit, I do not know them, whether or not it's state or local. But do you want to take that, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll chime in. So so the zoning regs, as as Jim, Jim said, zoning regs for retail use has a ratio that they have to follow. There's a provision for the waiver request where they show where reserved area is in and basically commit to if there's, if there's a need or the user changes, that those spaces are constructed. If your regulations did not have that reserved area, let's just say, just said, you have to provide X spaces per whatever square footage, then a variance would have been required. But because we have that reserved area, that's why you're not seeing that a variance. Does that, Mark, does that help you?
Oh, Josh, I'm sorry. Because I was, I was wondering if, you know, if we gave a variance to reduce the number of spaces, would that be? I don't even know if we can do that, but I was wondering if that would be a reasonable solution.
So if I could chime in, we're at, for our use, we're at 66 spaces. That that's about the bare minimum that would work for this retailer.
Okay.
And I, you know, you're you're talking a ratio of about, probably about one space per, for about three spaces per 1,000 square feet, slightly underneath, that's a pretty low ratio for retail use. Most retail uses would be in the range of any, anywhere from five to six spaces per 1,000 square feet. So again, you know, per your regulation, we need to provide about 100, a little over 100 spaces here. We don't need it. That's one good thing about Tractor Supply, it's a low intensity retail use.
And and Josh, just because they're only requesting the locational variance, that's what you can only act on tonight? If they were at, if they, if their application included a reduction of spaces, that's a different conversation. But all we have is just locational variance for the parking spaces.
Okay.
All right, Ally, do you have anything to ask of the applicant before we close the application?
I do not. He, they answered my question before and I've good with everything else that was asked and answered.
Mr. Chairman, you have a few members of public here that may want to speak tonight. You may want to ask them first before we close the public hearing.
By all means, I'll be honest, that's new to me. How do I do that, Mike?
It's, well, there, there are, they should be on the call if anyone is a member of the public that wishes to speak and address the board. Since this is a public hearing, you have the right to speak if you're, we would like to.
By all means, please identify yourself and your address if you could. And by, by all means, unmute yourself and let yourself be heard. Okay, well, we'll, we'll give you a second chance in a minute. Let's go through the rest of the commissioners and make sure there's no questions amongst us. Joanne, did you have any other questions? All right, Rom, did you have any additional questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mark, was that it for you?
Just that, again, back to the yellow, the fenced outdoor display area. So you drive, you drive in, I just see two, two driveways. So you like, you drive in one way and exit the other way. Yeah, yeah, that will be one way. That will be a one-way drive aisle. Gotcha, I'm trying to picture it in my head. I can't, the only thing I'm like trying to compare to maybe like an outdoor, like those outdoor areas at like Home Depot, you know, with that, like the garden center, is that kind of like what what we're looking at?
Similar, but you don't drive into those. This one you can drive all the way through. Again, so the customer, the pickup truck can actually drive in, will be loaded up with products and then pull straight out and continue out the second fence and out through the main access drive.
Interesting.
Yeah, just to speak from my own experience, usually you have like a trailer or something. You get your like, the big fence poles, the gates and, you know, they give you a hand putting them on the trailer. And then you continue on your way once you're, once you're loaded, so.
That's pretty cool, I've never seen that.
Loading area. Loading area. Anything else, Mark?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Ally, any, any questions? All right. Josh, was that it for you?
I'm good.
I am back to the beginning. So again, I'd like to invite anyone from the general public that would like to speak up. We'd love to hear from you. Um, if you don't talk now, when we close the application and deliberate amongst ourselves, you cannot talk. So, uh, we'll give you just a few more seconds here while I'm talking to, by all means, let us know your concerns, your impressions, and any questions that would help clarify what is being requested.
I just want to point out too, that the, um, the person who's on this, MC Diodavo, he's from my office. So he's, uh, he, he most likely won't be adding anything to this. He's just listening.
All right. Well, I think we've given fair notice a couple of times about anyone wanting to chime in. So at this point, I'd like to close the application. We will deliberate about amongst ourselves unless Matt or, uh, Mr. Cassidy, you wanted to contribute anything else. This is last call, if you will, for your input that you'd like us to deliberate, to deliberate upon.
Oh, we appreciate you, you know, considering this application and we hope to be, uh, be able to develop this site pretty soon here in Simsbury.
Yeah, just, I also want to thank you for, uh, hearing us tonight and, um, you know, we'll look forward to bringing this project to the next step. And, um, you know, thanks again. We're, listen, we're always here if you have any more questions, even just general questions about the project, uh, you know, after this meeting.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you working with the town, um, and taking the time to present your application. And, um, with that, we will close the application and, um, now it's time for us to deliberate amongst ourselves. Um, would someone like to take the lead on this?
I'll start. Um, I'm going to say that first of all, I think it's, um, we're fortunate that somebody's, you know, looking at this property. It's been sitting there sad for a long time. So, um, I do appreciate that piece of it. Um, and I do appreciate the fact that they are, have worked with this oddly shaped property to place that building at an angle, which is probably not ideal for them. And, um, they have eliminated the setback issue to the rear and to the south side of the main building. Um, I think that's an advantage. Uh, the fact that they have reduced the curb cut situation, it's going to be a lot less congest, uh, confusing there on the front of the property with just the one entrance. And, um, overall, I think those are improvements that they've made. Um, it looks like because of the way they changed the angle of the building, square footage-wise, as far as the setback encroachment, they're reducing it overall. Um, so even though it's to the front of the building now instead of the back, it's still less of an encroachment, which is in my mind an advantage as well.
I concur. Um, you know, I am familiar with Tractor Supply, some of their other branches, and I can see them conform, sort of molding their round peg into this square hole.
Absolutely.
So I, I see the effort they're putting forward. I, it's not like they're just, I want this and I should get it because I want it.
Right.
Um, they've put some good effort and I, I see the, the creativeness in accommodating this odd-shaped parcel in their plan.
Well, and it's an odd-shaped parcel in an odd part of town, frankly. I live up here. I'm.
Hey, I do too.
Sorry, Stephen, but it is. And I live two minutes up the road from, or down the road from that spot. And, um, it is a little bit of an odd part of town. Um, you know, I think it's, I think this is a great, um, addition to town to have this business coming. So, um, and the fact that they have really figured out a way to make use of this property that's sort of been sitting there sadly for such a long time, I'm, I'm, I think that's, um, kudos to them, honestly.
I, I agree. I, I don't know a ton about the company or the store. I've never set foot in one. I've passed the one up in Southwick. I think there's one up in Southwick. Um, but, I mean, I guess there are a lot of farms around here. I mean, I, I work for a company that, that has a lot to do with, with farms. I mean, on the financial side, but I know that there are a lot of, uh, our customers, customers around here and, uh, it's hard to miss farm. So I think it's, it's good. Like, uh, Joanne said, that, um, something done with the space is good, done with the land, and they've clearly made that effort. And I'm still learning being part of this, this group, so there's a lot going on here, but it, it all makes sense to me. And I think that the building, turning the bill, making that effort to turn the building, they're going to have this outdoor display area. It sounds kind of cool. I mean, I would probably go. So I think it looks good and, and, uh, they're doing it the right way, it seems.
Ram, what's your impression?
Yeah, definitely. It's a very good add to the town, Simsbury town. Um, and also it's good to use a, you know, um, uh, space that's unused for so long. Um, I, I definitely, you know, um, like this.
Cool. I'm glad to hear that. We should really be centering on their hardship more than it is a welcome economic component of our town. But the hardship of, is, is what we're deliberating tonight. And, um, you know, I think they're working with the hardship. Ally, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I echo what everybody has said and I agree with you said, um, Stephen, that they're, um, working with it. I think they've shown that they're willing to work within our regulations and, um, explain the hardship and, uh, explain themselves. So that we better understand what's going on too. We all had a lot of questions. Uh, so I agree with what you just said about the hardship and what other people have said as well.
Cool. Thanks, Ally. Uh, Josh?
Yeah, um, I just, I, I really, you know, appreciate that, um, it seems they've put a lot of thought into designing this lot, uh, so that, uh, or the parking lot to really meet the minimum standard that they're required to meet while doing it in, with the least variance possible. Um, I'll admit, when I, when I first saw this diagram, I, I thought, you know, that's a bit, like you could lose one or two spots and shift stuff around and get it done. But I, having, you know, talked to them, it seems like they've really done, uh, the best they can to reduce that variance as much as possible while, while still meeting the minimum, minimum requirements.
I think that is everyone. Does anyone have, um, would anyone like to make the motion?
I can do it for you if you want.
Yeah, by all means.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve application number 21-04 of MACV LLC, applicant in Valley Recreation LLC owner for a variance of the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 4.3, to allow parking within the 25-foot front yard setback at the property located at 1603 Hot Meadow Street as per plans provided, assessors map HO2 block 403 and lot 002B. The hardship being that the site is irregularly shaped and it is currently non-conforming to the rear yard setback. They have proposed a plan that would eliminate the rear yard nonconformity in addition to reducing the amount of imperious coverage within the 25-foot yard setback by the elimination of one of the accessways off the street. Um, they've also, uh, agreed to reducing or been able to reduce the number of necessary parking places in order to fit in the 66 they've got in as compact an area as possible with a possible ability to expand parking if necessary into their, the, uh, the fenced-in area to the south side of the property.
Do you want to add something perhaps about the landscape buffer to screen the parking area from Hot Meadow Street is a requirement of this?
Uh, yeah, they will be, and they have agreed to conform with landscaping requirements when they go before zoning, um, which will follow this application being approved.
I'll make it easy. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, all those abstain, it's unanimous. You pass. Thank you for working with us and welcome to the town of Simsbury.
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much. Really forward to coming back for the town and I'd say a month or so with our next, uh, application. So thank, thank you very much. It's, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and effort.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Um, our next order of business is the approval of the minutes of our February 24th meeting. Um, has everyone had the opportunity to review them and did you find any errors?
I did find a couple errors. Do you want to? I did actually read them. So line 75 should say compliance. I think it says comply instead of compliance. These are very picky little mistakes. Honestly, they're kind of dumb, but I found.
You're not a teacher, are you?
I might be a teacher. Um, so line 75 compliance and line 84, it should say facing the woods. It says, um, yeah, words.
Oh, I didn't even, yeah.
And also the same on line 141. Should say woods, which spell check's never going to catch that because it's not spelled wrong. It's just the wrong word. And then I think on line 173, it should say to a point. To be right, I think.
Yeah.
Right? That's what I found. There was a lot in there, so.
Thank you for, uh, being so thorough because I read it and I didn't catch it to be.
Honestly, often I skim. Tonight I actually read it, so.
Good for you. Um, let's, um, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. We approve them. Um, before we adjourn, I believe, uh, we, I'd just like to acknowledge that Laura is our new contact person. Um, she's been behind the scenes. She always hid behind her block and never let us see her face unless you got here early or late. So welcome, Laura. We look forward to, uh, to you helping us do, do what we do, the way we do it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, with that, um, being said, would someone like to make that final motion of the night? Which is to adjourn? Seriously, Bueller?
Bill, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All second.
Of, of, uh, March 24th to 2021.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you all for the time. Appreciate it.